Good evening, everybody. It feels like good afternoon. This is our regular scheduled meeting, but we're starting in a couple hours early. We're being recorded, I want to let everybody know, we're being recorded by our new, what did you call it?
Carver Halifax.
Carver Halifax Cables. We're also covered by our illustrious news reporter for the Plington Halifax.
Express.
Express. Some things I remember and another thing. Before we stop the meeting, I'd like to ask if we can stand for the pleasure of ladies?
For the flag of the last days of our life, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask the board if you have anything you'd like to add to the agenda this evening? Have you looked at it? Are we good?
I'm good.
Or any announcements, or heads up, thumbs up, and thumbs down? Good?
Well, just to thank everybody for the, I got several phone calls of concern that I missed the last meeting, so I'd like to thank those people ahead of time for thinking about me and my time in the week. That's it.
That's nice. Very nice. We're hesitant on saying anything, but we knew you liked those phone calls, and we knew it would help you heal and pray, pray for your quick recoveries to get you back up here.
There was only one that was, sounded like it was from you, but I'm not sure.
Anyway, we have a 5:30 executive session. I guess what we'll do is we'll go ahead into the executive session, and we will be coming back in public hearing. It's in regards to our grievance hearing. Ken Bartekow, and whether, I don't believe we'll have any statements concerning the executive, but we will be coming back as soon as that executive session is over, a regular session, if I can get a vote on the board to go on the executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Need further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Alright, we'll be back. Thank you. We're rolling. Hey, we're back. Wow, it's quarter past seven. Moving right along. No, anyways, we have a seven o'clock appointment. Friends of Hops.
Friends of Hops, in the house.
Do we have two friends?
No. Well, he's a friend, but not a Hops friend.
He could be, yeah. He could have donated.
Not officially.
So anyways, what brings you along?
Well, I just wanted to give you guys a quick update on our plot for Hops, which we have on the books for April the 11th. Everything as of right now, where still all systems go. Obviously, if you look out the window, it's kind of hard to, I know this town.
You guys could have built igloos and all kinds of stuff out there.
Someone said we should have had a guess the date when the snow's gone.
When is it?
It's a month from tomorrow.
It might be money. We might have to do some lawn.
Yeah, we might have to do some landscape in there, but as of now, we're all systems go, and I just wanted to keep you guys up to date. We were going to include a couple of different things, just to try to help us out as far as raising more money than just doing the cow event. We wanted to have it be like a family-type day. Again, let's hope we get some weather. So we're going to do the jumpy thing. It's going to be similar to events that have been done for by law, same Fourth of July, kind of that setup. We will have food there. I have one food vendor confirmed.
You're going to have food around Ploppi?
Well, that's it. If you look at the map, I tried to.
Oh, because they're waiting for it.
Yeah.
Make sure it's upwind.
Up, yeah.
Jonathan's provided us a nice nap.
I get a nice, beautiful nap there. You need a nap, apparently.
We had a nap.
But yeah, I put a nap there for you guys. I'll try to keep everything separate.
Know what that was?
We're basically going to keep the animals kind of to the back. In addition to the cow plopp, we have the folks from the farm?
They're not an official farmers, well, they're like a farmer's association, so there were some people that attended a meeting last week for the water health, and I sat next to a woman who had offered, she's actually on the school committee, Terry Carmen, had offered any time that Hops or any other children events, that she would be happy to get together some ponies or farm animals to do like a little petting zoo or pony ride.
Have you contacted the sheriff's department about their farm and stuff?
Well, yeah. I was a little bit hesitant, Troy, just because we're running into such a weather kind of situation, snow situation. I didn't want to shoot the moon and have the whole circus come into town for an event that we might.
Shoot quarter of the moon.
Well, yeah.
At least. Neither of them measure out the parking lot.
Yeah.
And they're really happy to help. I mean, the residents, Terry Carmen, said that, you know, a lot of the people who have animals are always looking for events to show up their stuff, and so they're really excited about helping their community in Hops.
Absolutely. And we have, I have a call in, we'll have porta potties there. I turned in my report up to Kathy up at water health today, so she gave us the okay. So yeah, I just wanted to keep you guys in the loop and let you know, Mr. Nezarella's going to be providing us with the cow. He also said if we run into a situation where we don't have a spot here, and he had a spot that was usable up there at the farm, he'd let us use the spot.
Can I see the cow before, and I give it a little lax lax?
A little something.
I was going to say that. How do you adjust his feeding habits, or you just?
He might be out there for an hour.
Well, I'll tell you a story.
Or do you, like, alright, somebody knows this cow, and knows how it goes, and that way you kind of got a feel when it goes?
I'll tell you a plot horror story.
If it goes at breakfast, it doesn't go till?
We'll turn, we'll turn.
But you got a backup cow, in case one goes early?
Yeah, well, we have Whitman Baseball, Whitman Baseball does it every year, and they were actually getting the cow ready to go onto the field, and it took its course literally right before it got on the field. So they waited three hours, to no avail. So what can happen in that, it does happen, hopefully it doesn't happen here, but what will happen in that stance is we will have a backup plan of either pulling a name, yeah, pulling a name out of a hat, or some sort of thing to get it right.
What happens if it goes within 15 minutes?
That's fine.
It dazes games.
No, no, no. It's fine. There's three prizes. So first plop, let's say we get one plop, that's the first prize. We have a three-hour window. If in that three-hour window it goes again, that becomes first prize, and first prize gets bumped back to second prize. And if it goes again, that gets bumped to first prize, and everything moves back down the line.
So you're going to have stats on cows, and pretty much kind of how they?
How they work. They go 12, an average of 12 times a day.
Is a hair fur, or what kind of cow?
I have to tell you, I don't know. I know it's a moo cow.
Yeah, you're going to be a farmer after the?
Hopefully not. Hopefully not. So I just wanted to keep you guys in the mix, you know, again, hopefully we have some green on our town green that we can use. The other thing we wanted to do too.
Easier to see the plops of the snowing outside.
Exactly. Hopefully we don't have to spray paint lines with the snow. But the other thing we want to talk about too is we were offered the opportunity for pony rides through the woman that was.
Terry Carmen.
Terry Carmen as well. And we wanted to make sure that it was okay with the town, you know, liability-wise, to make sure that it's okay to hold a pony ride.
Because she doesn't have professional company doing that. If she brings the ponies, and then we have riders and such, the town's going to be liable in case anything goes wrong, since we're insuring her along with Hops and everything else. I mean, I'm not saying I don't want to do that, I just want the board to be aware that there'll be.
Is there another event on that day? On the green, or in the?
No.
So that's strictly the only event?
The only thing I will say, Mike, is that, again, with the snow, is tentatively the opening morning for soccer across the street, for heavyweight soccer, so we're hoping a lot of kids.
Does that open the day for Halifax, or the whole?
For Halifax and much of the towns, but they are talking about moving things, they're talking about moving spring sports back if we have to.
Let's build that money.
Yeah.
Well, I put it this way, when you see the crocus looming, then we can start.
Then we can go, yeah. Well, I can't see the lawn.
They did, and it got snowed under, didn't it?
I did speak to Bob about, he doesn't officially have a line maker. He could get one from Plington, but it's the same as soccer.
Doesn't high school have? Oh, it is. In talking with Whitman, Whitman does a great job. They raised $15,000 on their cow plopp.
When do they do theirs?
They do theirs as part of baseball, and they do it at the end of their baseball season as their major fundraiser. They sell 3,000 squares at $5 a square. They do amazing though.
So this one just could be the prerequisite, you could do it again?
Yeah, I mean, we're hoping we kind of work this out this year, and we can make it an annual. But what they said is really like, we're intensive guys, is my thought was I was just going to, I'd help out with soccer, and I would just use a little soccer machine to line it, and he said, just a heads up, that took us eight hours to do, to do the field. He said what we did, and what Whitman helped them with, is the DPW helped them out, they had a line machine that they use for roads and stuff, and they said that was under two hours. So we were maybe hoping that maybe Bob.
But I checked with him tonight, and we don't own one.
We don't own a line machine.
Well, you might get one from.
Check the high school.
Junior high.
Yeah.
Because they do a lot of their fields too.
Their own leggings and stuff.
Yeah.
In fact, they have a tractor that goes back across.
Yeah, this one they was talking, I think, Troy, was like a street liner, you know, like doing lines on the street kind of thing.
Well, it's the same type of thing, they put it on the football field, the yard lines, all that stuff, they put them across there too, it's the same thing.
Isn't that what you said, took eight hours?
Yeah, well, the ones that we use for soccer and stuff are just like a spray paint can with a, you know, one smaller.
What they're saying is maybe they have a higher grade of equipment.
Yeah, yeah, we'll look into that, sure.
Back to the horse, the pony, what's the history on the individual animal, if we're going to say yeah to the, this, where it's the town's liability?
I know she's, I know she's well, pretty well-known in the community. She did do a neighborhood horse caroling event in her neighborhood down on the, I want to say it was Hudson Street area.
Yes.
And that was very, that was very well-received, so, I mean, I believe she's reputable, but I can't, I can't personally.
Did she bring the ponies up for Fourth of July, was it?
No, no, but she's, she's been on the school committee, she's, you know, like Jonathan said, she's, she's really been involved a lot with this whole right to farm and, you know, water health bylaw, so.
I'm just trying to understand, because, you know, I don't know, you know, horses or, maybe had one of the ponies that, they really don't get big, and that's the extent of my experience with them, you know, with the manner, or how they are with crowds.
Sure.
Does she do a lot of her own?
I can check with her, I can check with her and get back to you guys.
Because if that's the case, you're going to have a lot of people up here, and.
Sure, we're hoping.
We just want to make sure that.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can talk with her and see what pony, like specific pony riding experience she has.
Well, not only the pony riding experience, but what type of animal she's going to have up there, how long they've been riding.
Right.
Is something that's been broken for a long time, an old horse, an old pony?
Yeah.
If it makes a difference, yelling.
I'll get the skinny from her and see what's going on. And we're going to keep it, we had pony rides here before, and I'm blanking on what event it was, but we would obviously keep it kind of back.
Halifax Lights.
Halifax Lights. We keep it back and out of the way of everything, just to, you know, keep.
So you don't step in the plops.
You always get the pony to plops.
I think we.
That might be a good backup.
I don't think any of us would mind the pony, but we're just going to have more.
More info.
Background on.
Sure. I don't mind doing that at all.
We got time.
Yeah, and then I know we're talking just plops, but just to keep on the back burner too, we have the Hop for Hops 5K, our second annual 5K coming up in June, and we already have 32 registered runners, which I know doesn't sound like a lot, but we weren't even accepting registrations at this point last year, so we're actually ahead of the game this year, and I think it's going to be a great term.
I appreciate all the hard work you guys have done, I appreciate anyone in town that volunteered to time.
We have an awesome, we have an awesome committee, and it's a lot of parents that, you know, have to be crazy, scheduled shifting, and we've got a lot of young kids, so.
You know, last weekend, just at last minute, Jonathan and some parents went out on the ice and making, you were selling food.
Yeah, yeah, we were selling food.
Food for Hops, so these are people that just at a drop of a hat will go out there and do what they can to help raise money.
Hot chocolate would have been great with all the slidings going down that hill.
Yeah, no, I mean, it was great, I mean, I couldn't participate, but they would.
I saw an ad in the last week's Plington Halifax Express. Was that for the Hops?
Oh, yeah, and also too, we're doing in the school, we're doing a change challenge.
Ah, that's the one.
Yeah, a change challenge. And every grade has a, has a water cooler, and we're using the whole month of March, and every grade is trying to bring in some coins. It's really cute, the kids are really getting excited about it.
Because most people, you know, they don't even use the change.
Trust.
Then they'll spend 15 cents dumping it in a machine, and it takes 15 pound a dollar, I guess.
But it's spreading pretty quickly. We, for the first week, we had $600 worth of change in the first week.
What's the ink to bring that to?
Well, they don't have, our bank is Rockland Trust, and they don't have a change machine, so I have to drive it over to Middleborough, but pull in.
You don't go to Rockland?
Rock, they don't have the sorting machine, you know, Troy, that where you dump the coins in?
I have Rockland Trust, I take, because I don't like paying a fee for it.
Yeah.
I go to Rockland Trust over, behind the Rockland Bank there, they have a little building out back, he has a change machine.
Oh, really? Yeah, when I was there last week, they told me they didn't have a sortable one, so I went down to Middleborough and put it in there. But anyway, so we're running after the month of March, and then the winning grade gets a movie and popcorn.
They're all excited.
Yeah, the kids are very, very excited.
Where's the potty?
In the school, in the school.
During?
Probably during school hours, yeah, probably towards the end of the year. I'm going to let them vote on what movie they want to, with any reason.
And I did leave another.
Grateful.
Yeah, exactly.
I left another message for the country.
Okay, yeah.
We're still, yeah, we're trying to.
Working on other events as well, possibly golf tournament, and some other events there too, so.
Well, that's good, I knew there was something.
Yeah, no, thanks, it's like.
Keep having you look close to me. With the rumble and the tumble down here with the trucks and stuff?
No.
Be able to put a bottle down there or something?
We did, we did one year. I'm trying to remember, Ken, what year was, was that the November one?
Well, they're going to be doing it again, I mean, they get their crowds on there.
The Tuxedo Truck?
No, 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 the Mud Fest.
Oh, the Mud, yeah, they are doing it again.
We were there in November.
They're doing it, and they're doing two.
You did the first, you did the May or the earlier one, I didn't see up there.
They're doing the crawl.
Yeah, that's because we didn't really get, like, we made the tiki bar, but we didn't really get a lot of donations.
Yeah.
Because there were a lot of people from out of town.
It was a lot of people from out of town, you know, that come from far away, that weren't really connected to.
Into playgrounds.
Yeah.
Exactly. So we did, we gave it a good college try, but we didn't really get a good return.
But we'll be selling squares this weekend for the plot for Hops on Friday night at the basketball game, starting at 4:30, and then.
And Saturday and Sunday outside of Stop &amp; Shop, they're going to sell squares.
Yeah.
Halifax Stop &amp; Shop?
Halifax Stop &amp; Shop.
Yep, so people want to stop by and purchase a square or two, or my favorite deal, which is five for 40.
Yeah, yeah, it's $10 a square, five squares for 40, and also the town clerk is nice enough, you can get your squares there as well.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Awesome.
Any questions? We just got to pray for the melts.
Yeah.
Keep doing the melt dance.
Try to get some info, or have her, maybe she can come up if she had, we might talk to Charlie if he has any more particulars.
When do you folks meet again?
Two weeks.
The fourth. Okay.
Twenty-fourth. In two weeks, yeah.
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah.
I think that would help, yeah, sure. Alright, good.
Alright.
Awesome.
Thank you so much, Jonathan.
Thanks for coming in.
No worries.
See you Monday.
Gordon, Gordon, Gordon Gordon, the name?
Gordon.
Gordon, alright, is Gordon on that list tonight? Oh, here we go.
It was a black list.
Your party crash?
What are you looking to crash there, Gordon?
Yeah, yeah, you're probably line seven, I guess.
Huh? Line seven?
On the agenda.
Oh.
Seven. Is it a lion?
That's scary.
We should keep him here, and we'll just, when we get somewhere. Is it in our notes, Charlie, line seven?
I read the article in the newspaper about to speak another year, they appreciate the representative.
Well, we can talk about it, sure. It's in our notes, we're going to.
Gordon, why don't you tell them what?
So we will take it out of order for you.
Okay, so.
You went upstairs, didn't you?
Yes.
Or did anybody come?
Three of them.
Casey, you?
Summer and Warren.
Oh, good.
What was upstairs?
Talk about the.
Our group of residents just organized a very informal talk, to go through the Silverlake budget, because there are people who aren't as familiar with the budget and the elements, and what does this piece of it do, and what's all about that type of thing.
So, you've got this listed here, we have line two here, finance committee, you have resignation.
Well, for Karen Favor, right.
We're waiting for you guys to kick forum, so we.
We haven't done any business yet. We had the hearing, and then we had Hops, and now.
That's it.
We haven't got any of our regular stuff done yet.
Okay.
Well, I thought we were waiting for finance to get a quorum, and that we would come.
Well, we'll take that in pieces. Karen resigned, which is separate from Ms.
Oh, this is another one.
We're going to try and have Ms. Braga come in on the 24th with, I need to contact the moderator, we'll have someone for finance, and we can have a vote to have her appointed if everybody's on board, two weeks from now.
Is this immediate, or at the end of the term?
Which one?
This latest?
Favor is immediate, so we're down, we're, if she's in, we'll be back to six.
If later, if the board appoints Linda Braga, then we'd be back to up to six members on the finance committee.
And we'll have her come in in two weeks for an interview with the board, and have a vote at the end of the interview.
Well, if you have one sooner.
We had.
They already met with her. No, if. But isn't it a joint vote?
Yes.
Okay. If you have another finance committee sooner with forum.
We could go to the.
We could go to that meeting.
Well, we could do that, why that's.
If you need it sooner.
Let me see about getting John then.
Okay.
Monday to 16.
Okay.
Let me just put it on my.
Sixteenth what? March. And I will contact John Bruno to see if he can come in.
That's his ZVA hearing for the 40 page.
Would that help, having somebody in sooner? She's already been attending, right?
She attended the first meeting last night. So the, so the real issue with the budget is your line seven here, the Silverlake Regional District budget. We don't have an assessment number yet from the district. We have a number that Charlie came up with, which is very similar to the number that I came up with, but we do not have an assessment number yet officially from Silverlake.
We don't expect to get one until at least this Thursday.
So they didn't, they didn't vote on it?
Well, they voted.
Anything in the meeting the last, Thursday?
No.
Don't they vote on the money?
No.
Don't, I thought.
Have to? Yes, no, in the sense of, yeah, by law, they need to have done it 45 days in advance of the Kingston town meeting, which would have been that Thursday. There is a practical difficulty in that, that they didn't have a state aid number then, and they didn't have minimum contribution numbers from the Department of Education at that point either.
We usually don't have state aid numbers.
They still don't have state aid numbers.
Actually, we, usually by that point, at least we have the governor's budget, which would have included the state aid numbers, which would all.
Isn't that still being debated, though, I think, Department of Fire?
Well, his is, and it's.
Yeah, okay, usually, in most years.
And you should know.
In most.
My camera.
In most years, the governor will come out with a budget in January, at the same time, Department of Education will come out with a minimum contribution levels. So all that information is available to the Silverlake School Committee in February, let's say the end of February. In this case, Governor Baker, you know, by law was allowed to wait until the Fourth of March to release the budget last week, and also Department of Education at that point released the minimum contribution levels. That information was needed to figure out the actual assessments. They could have theoretically said, we're going to make some assumptions, and then a week, and then two weeks later said, sorry.
And that's what you assumed they were going to do, that make assumptions, and then come back.
No, in a practical manner, by law, they would have had, they would have done it, but it wouldn't have made any sense. I don't think, I certainly wouldn't have encouraged them to do so, even if it was, they were required by law, because in terms of a practical reason, it wasn't going to work. I mean, as it is, the numbers, if we had used last year's numbers, minimum contribution levels, which are a very, very complex formula, we would have been off. We know, in fact, it would have been to a disadvantage to Halifax to have the numbers set two weeks ago.
So we have, we don't have any idea when it might be.
Well, we're fairly sure this coming Thursday would put money, no, you think not?
Well.
We, the thing is, all the numbers exist.
Yes.
The decision on actually voting a budget might be separate. The numbers that we need are, all their sources of revenue, we know their state aid numbers, we know the minimum contribution levels, we know that we have to plug in things like the tuition payments that they get in for students getting into their programs, things like that.
And the Pembroke reimbursement for health insurance.
Well, that, that was included in the previous year, so that, that number, if you just level fun and get, which Charlie, I'll update on the assessment.
Right.
So they can, the numbers exist that could be plugged in. The real thing is, what's their gross budget? If they, on Tuesday, they vote a gross budget equal to what's proposed in version one, then we can, you can run your calculations. If they vote a slightly different number, or a lot different number, you run the calculations[1436.91] If they vote a slightly different number, or a lot different number, you run the calculations again. Um, but the thing is that, if you use the numbers we have available to us right now, with their version one budget, we're running on about five or six percent increase in, in our assessment, and that's the least.
And that amounts to two hundred and fifty thousand.
And Kingston is more on the order of twelve to thirteen, Plington's more on the order of fifteen percent. I know that you've been in contact with your colleagues.
Oh, so.
So, the, the real questions that we have, I promised that I'd give you the exact numbers, but the real questions we have are the, uh, calculation that's provided by, what is the growth factor that the towns can support, which comes from D O R, and is fed into the calculation? Those numbers, I was told by Lisa, who's the director of the data bank, that those numbers will be posted by the end of this week, so we can see what, what they use for a formula.
Okay, those should be already in there, in the.
It's not, the sixteen number for the growth factor, when you go to the website, isn't, they haven't updated the spreadsheet yet. But there's real questions on whether or not that, that Plington can actually have a six point six percent minimum growth factor increase. I think there's some real questions. When you, when you go deep into theirs, they're like six point six percent increase that the state believes that they can do. Kingston's a four point four percent, Halifax is around a three point three to three point five, someplace in there. I really think King's, uh, Plington's number is incorrect, because they have such an issue with what happened with the Cisco.
Cisco assessment.
And I think that the state is basing their calculation off of some wrong data.
From Cisco, from tax?
From the, from the town.
Or the excise.
Both excises.
Yeah, 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 'cause they overestimated that, right, and they ended up excising somewhere else.
So their, their excise is decreasing for this year, and the fees are decreasing for this year as well, because Cisco paid them such a large fee.
And since we got a bump, and they're, and they're assuming the bump is normal.
But the, so, I have, I have real questions on whether Plington's minimum contribution number is real, and whether Kingston's minimum contribution.
How do you make them aware?
So as soon as we get the information from that formula that's uploaded to the spreadsheet, you know, the spreadsheet's uploaded online, we can then contact the D O R and ask them where they got this information from. Because the way it's set up, when you deep dive into the calculation, I don't see how Plington can support a six point six percent.
Well, that, and they didn't really have a population difference. Like, that's the other thing. No, I think you're so smart to even look at that, honestly, like, nobody else would really think of that, like, that's really great. But I think what else supports that, and the, the, the thought that it, it shouldn't be accurate, is that they didn't have a large population increase, where, you know, in years past, we have, like, our contribution went down. Part of it is the ability to pay, and some of it is our population.
Yeah, sorry, that, let's figure it in, there's.
So there's this growth factor number for Plington being over six percent.
Doesn't make sense.
Doesn't make sense from the perspective, if I'm looking at it. So when we, when we look at the Silver Lake budgets, um, the reason why I stuck in here for the meeting was, there's a meeting at five o'clock.
Yeah, just, got finally posted at three.
Just wondering if, how many selectmen are going to the meeting?
Oh, they don't know about it, yeah, because we haven't gotten.
You really jump on the gun, you really jump on the gun.
It was only, it was only announced four hours ago, so.
So, um.
And you can't let them know, you can't let the state know ahead of time to, to be aware of that bump with Plington, I mean, you can't, you have to wait till it comes out before you can question.
Oh, I'm gonna contact them tomorrow and find out. I've already put a call into somebody in the governor's office, I haven't got a phone call back yet.
I have a call, well, I saw Casey, and I texted her earlier today, 'cause I wanted to have a conversation with her about, um, the budget, 'cause John Creed had called me, and, you know, I, I understand that they're looking at the budget, and they do plan on cutting some of it. I know that there was some talk about using E and D to offset the budget, which would be concerning to us if that was what is presented on Thursday, we don't know really, so I did put a call into her to, she's gonna call me tomorrow.
My perspective on that, regardless of the Pembroke settlement?
Yeah.
Is it's a bad idea to use E and D money for funding the budget regardless. And we know that there's three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that they were looking to the towns to make up, because they spent that money from the capital.
But you're in it, you're in now.
Yeah.
So applying it towards the budget for the school?
So there was a.
Or the budget, applying it to the budget anywhere?
They bought capital projects with capital project money, but now there's no capital project money. However, they simply threw in three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of operating costs into the fiscal sixteen budget, equaling the same amount, and said to the towns, here, you take care of it.
Yeah, but they told me that that was on capital.
We weren't.
All right, no, all right.
So regardless of that?
Yeah.
Um, if you can make that meeting, I'm planning on.
What is that meeting exactly?
Five o'clock, Silver Lake, it's the Silver Lake Regional School Committee's Revenue Subcommittee.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
And there's a representative from the other.
But I don't think it's gonna be discussed then, I think it's gonna, that portion is gonna be discussed at the six o'clock meeting. At five o'clock, what I understand is gonna happen is, when we had, we went to that meeting, and, um, we talked about the Pembroke money, and we were asked individually what we felt our towns wanted, and I explained that. I thought the cleanest way of doing it was to get the complete refund, if it was possible, and then reallocate that Pembroke money toward capital items for Silver Lake. But to make it a clean sweep where it goes through the proper vote of town meeting, we get the money back. They show us their ten-year capital plan the same way we have a capital plan, and we see how those priorities fill in, and we certainly commit to doing some of those things that are on the list.
Well, the town would.
Vote it.
Vote it.
Yeah.
That's, was the whole idea of this whole thing, is.
Yeah.
To give the towns their opportunity to.
So what I expect to happen on Thursday.
Reallocate.
Is that we, you know, I thought we were all sort of on board at the five o'clock meeting, and then at the six o'clock meeting, they talked a little bit about, you know, having a special town meeting within our annual that funded some of the capital, and again, I said, unless they were emergency fixes, like, we need to really look at a plan before we, you know, come to. So my hope is that at five o'clock, they will show us a pan, a plan of the things that are critical to get done now. And, you know, we can talk to them about funding some of those capital items.
Um, duly noted.
But at six o'clock, they'll be talking about the potential of using.
E and D.
E and D, again, that's just.
That's the full committee, not the subcommittee?
Right.
So the, the subcommittees are five, the full committees are.
'Cause, I mean, again, this is all sort of hearsay right now, from conversations from individual members of the, of the school committee. It hasn't been officially presented to the full school committee, but we all need to be on the same, um, plan. If it's presented, how we all feel about that.
Right, so with the preliminary numbers that we, Charlie calculated, I should calculate it, was about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase for the budget that, that they have presented currently. That puts us around, if, if we change the numbers to level, so the finance committee is gonna recommend level funding the local aid portion, the unrestricted local aid, and accepting the number from the governor's budget for the chapter seventy increases, as well as the number that they have for the veterans benefits.
But also taking into account the lower charter tuition reimbursement. But basically, the, the, what was the old lottery money is now just basically, you use it the way you want to, money, and we're, keep that.
It's about a twenty-five, twenty-nine thousand dollar increase.
Is that the charter money you're talking about?
No.
From the lottery.
Yeah, right, so I, I don't, from what I've seen so far, the deficit the states have, I don't think that's actually gonna work here.
Well, I mean, he's saying, I, I saw some of it, Charlie sounded over the, and I saw some of the, you know, that he's, has increases, but it's, it's not reasonable.
It's about twenty-nine thousand dollars, and right now, I think it makes more sense to just zero out that increase and plan for no increase in that long. So when we look at the deficit that we're currently in, it's about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars before we have a Silver Lake increase. If you add the Silver Lake increase, you are adding two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the deficit, so we're at four hundred and eighty thousand dollars per deficit.
Yeah, so what I asked Sandy to do this morning is to adjust for the things.
Okay.
And to put the new elementary school budget, although it's not.
Did we get one?
Is that conservative?
We got, we, what we got. It, that's, I'm just gonna just update the number quickly, because the elementary school passed out just the front part of the new budget last Monday.
Okay.
It wasn't officially voted, but it was lower than the previously printed one.
Okay.
So we know that it's probably not gonna go up, so I said to Sandy, why don't you plug that in, so we can see what that does to the deficit? So if we adjust the revenues, and we put in the new amount for this elementary budget, and we take ten thousand from the police wages.
What revenues are we adjusting?
We're adjusting the state revenue, which is what they just explained, like, only using certain things that Charlie Baker said. Then we'd be in a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar deficit, and then you'd add the two fifty.
Yeah.
So then we would be on.
Close to four hundred.
Yeah, we'd have four hundred.
Instead of over.
So three ninety, so three ninety-five of, of deficit. So, from the perspective of coming from this deficit, I believe that our assessment needs to be level funded from Silver Lake.
At least, 'cause, and then we'd still be looking for a hundred and forty-five thousand.
Right.
But we could get there, if for some reason, circuit breaker money comes back at sixty percent.
Yeah.
Then we can adjust it, and again, that new elementary budget included the adjustment to vocational education. They did lower it down, so that, we can't save anything there, 'cause we just did it.
So, so. At the, at the Monday night meeting on the sixteenth, we have both elementary and Silver Lake members of Halifax coming to our meeting at seven forty-five.
Oh, okay.
The superintendent, assistant superintendent, I'm going to try to attend, but that possibly may be late.
We're gonna drag, just 'cause that's the forty B hearing, I kinda wanted to go to that.
Who's this sooner? Is that the prelim, the first forty B kickoff?
The first of the ZB meetings.
Okay.
So.
Um, so, what times your meeting start, and what other appointments do you have?
Seven, seven o'clock is our first, it's what time we start, and seven forty-five is the appointment that we have with Silver Lake. That we don't have any other appointments scheduled for that night right now.
So I'm just suggesting.
The ZB is, they're black lives.
If we meet, if we meet, if we can come in and get this new member, we meet and greet and then appoint. And Charlie confirms with, with, uh, John Bruno, then at least you'll have one more member, you can get us in at the outset of the meeting.
Yeah, but I would.
We'll start at seven, and go for seven, as long as John is available for seven, we'll go for seven for here. We just need one person, however, the three of you here for that meeting.
Okay.
At seven.
To, to nominate and.
Right, okay.
Unless you guys are gonna interview.
That's true.
'Cause you guys have an interview.
Yeah, that's true.
We'd wanna interview.
Usually you should.
That's why I was thinking.
No, you're right.
We should trust you.
You can trust us, but I, I mean, you're a pointier as well, so.
And you've already interviewed, and your level is comfortable.
Yeah, she, she's a registered voter, and she has a heartbeat, and that's what we're looking for right now.
Oh, stop.
In, in an interest, she knows one-on-one, in an interest, okay, so what else?
No, I, I'm just saying that we, we are hurting, because we, we haven't had quorum, because one or another member hasn't been able, we've had snowstorms, I mean, this is really.
I know, it's been a very difficult time, and I've been go, having a little anxiety over it, just because I see this deficit, and, you know, it's really hard, 'cause people have had their issues and haven't been able.
So basically.
There's a lot of issues this winter.
Yeah.
So, so this, this number, again, is without snow and ice deficit, if there's a snow and ice deficit, this.
Right, you know, according to Sandy, there still isn't. Um, she hasn't got all the bills in from Melissa Trainor over at the Highway Department, but currently, the actual balance that we've got is still in the past. So I would also say that that probably means, unless we go through a march that was January, February, it, and if we have a deficit, it will not be as significant in relation to the other communities, both because we budget properly, and second, they seem to spend a lot more money per mile on roadwork.
I think too, is they maybe have more access to salt deliveries, which we haven't had any, the bonds have been empty a lot of times.
Can, can we talk about the philosophy of, of the Silver Lake assessment, in the sense of, we sent a directive to all departments? And I, I just wanna be clear that we're not gonna treat one department differently than others, that we, you know, there are gonna be things within their budget, that they're gonna have to have increases on, steps and lanes, health insurance.
Yeah, we get that.
No, but I'm saying, if we level fund, are we treating them differently than we would any other department?
Well, actually, the thing is, if we're at level assessment, us.
Yes.
But it doesn't mean the other two towns are at level assessment. In fact, their assessments will still go up a considerable amount, they may not be willing to spend
Accept them.
At the lo, same level that we'd be at level, but for the moment, let's say we're assuming we're level, it doesn't, their budget still can be up, even if we're at level.
No, I understand, I just don't want, I wanna make sure we're not laying off. Yeah, I'm, like, I'm just saying, I don't wanna start laying off at Silver Lake when we haven't held that same standard to other departments.
Also say that the, I'm not aware whether they voted a three-year for Silver Lake for their wages. If they, if they've already done that, and other, we're asking other departments to hint, to hold the line at zeros, and asking our union people and our non-union people.
We're asking.
And they've made the decision, we have no control over it, but they made a decision that they wanted to spend more money on wages. We can't, just as we can't say to them, um, you know, spend it here, spend it there, they can't tell us, you must give us this money.
Okay.
Because.
We're asking them to do something.
They made a decision without our consultants doing anything.
They, they need to be revenue, they need, they need to have a revenue-driven budget, not an expense-driven budget. The three towns can only come up with a certain amount of money, they're bound to that. If they've made bad decisions, or decisions that we disagree with, maybe they don't consider them to be bad decisions, but ones that put them financially in a tough place, they have to handle the consequences.
But take that aside, I know how you feel about that, but let, take, take the contract aside. There's gonna be increases for health insurance.
Right.
And regular steps and lanes. And so those, I just like to be consistent, as much as I would like it to be level funded, because it, it helps with our, our budget. What I'm saying is, what we've told the elementary school is, give us this, this is the directive from us, give us this number. If you feel confident that that's the number we've gotten from all the departments, and then we see the deficit, and then we go, okay, we gotta go back over.
I don't wanna disagree with you on that, but we still haven't got the original assessment number, so.
I know.
It, it is gonna be different at this point in time.
Okay.
So we need to get that number from them, and we need to come back, we're gonna meet that Monday night and say, this is where we are. It would be, actually, it'd be really great if you guys all could come to that meeting, to give you just a quick update.
Right.
To say, this is where we are.
Right, 'cause all we're looking at right now for them is their first draft, which is, everybody in the room said, we're not, we know we're not getting this.
Meeting on the sixteenth?
Yeah.
Planning it's here, sixteenth. This Monday, coming Monday.
So, so basically, we're in a hole, the hole's gonna get deeper, and we're gonna have to talk about what we, we previously talked about what the priorities are with the selectmen, we're gonna actually have to start getting into the budget and say, okay, this is where we're gonna propose cuts.
You know, there was one, I thought about this after the meeting, you know, thinking about this, and then going to sleep, thinking about it, having nightmares and dreams, and there was one department I thought, if we could not touch or hurt, would be council on aging. 'Cause I mean, they're the ones I think would be the one that I would say not to ask, or handle them differently than all the other departments. I know it's this little change from what I had said before, but I just kept thinking about, thinking about it, council on aging.
So, so when you.
That's just mine, I mean.
Okay, but when you look at the budget, right, we've said that police, fire, dispatch are untouchable, basically.
Well.
We, we know what, we know what their portion of the budget is, we know the two schools are about fifty-five to fifty-eight percent. You, you know, the fires, eight hundred thousand to nine hundred thousand, police is about a million point one, dispatch about three hundred thousand.
I never said that those departments are untouchable, I, I said, let's see what they come up with, see what they can come up with.
Right, and they did come up with it, and they met with finance, and we did come up with ten thousand on the police side.
So, so basically, I, right, I, I think.
I don't know if it's a big, big thing over there, but, you know, to me, that's something where, I changed my mind on that one department, that's all. So I just wanna let you know that.
I just.
Whether it means a snow, uh, whatever, I can't say that, in a snowbank.
I, I just think when we look at where we are, we're gonna know where we are as a town on Monday.
Mm-hmm.
And we're gonna have to make choices as a group. What does the finance committee make as recommendations, recommendations to the town? And it's okay if we disagree between what the selectmen, the finance, it sees as the priorities. I, I understand, we could disagree on that, but just, we, we have to realize where we are, so.
Will we, will we be comfortable with the numbers come Monday, those are pretty close to where we're gonna get?
The big, the big issue.
You know, as far as, we're, we're gonna, we're looking at it as tight, tight as it is, and, and it can only get better, not worse. Is that the numbers we're gonna be looking at kinda Monday?
Any other department resubmitted their budget? I know police did, but any other department resubmit their budget?
I don't believe so.
Right, so you haven't yet met with any department heads or voted any budget, so we don't really know, because you guys haven't even gone through.
The only thing we've gone through is the water department.
You went through water, police, fire, and dispatch, and, and water. But you haven't gone through the others to see if there's any savings in those line items.
No.
So we don't, we're not gonna really know on Monday, is my point.
We're gonna know probably how, the, the worst.
But you've gone through the bigger ones.
Yes, the percentage, yeah.
You've gone through the bigger ones, so the little ones aren't.
Gonna make a big difference.
No, they're gonna, they're gonna help, but they're not.
They will, it's, it'll decide whether it tips it.
Well, I mean, it's gonna be like, it's, it's gonna be like Halifax, um, and lights. Do we, do we have the overtime in the police budget, or, or is that? What, items like that, can we take it up?
Yeah.
Pretty much, we've already taken it up, so are we gonna fund the five hundred dollars for the garden club, or the, all those type of things, that's what.
Right, that's where you're at.
We had somebody from community, this, they were in here last, they were in here last, uh, meeting too, which they were hoping.
So.
For five thousand dollars. Yeah, but they said they'll, any contribution would be.
And we need to remember that we're going up to the levy, like.
And, yes, and people need to be aware that their tax bills are going up by four and a half percent, and, and we're still looking at cuts on the average one. That's the average.
Well, thank you for that.
No, no, I think it's important to talk about, so that people are aware of the fact that, you know, we have been managing the bu, budget very well, and we had this unexpected four hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase on special education, and that's why we're in the position that we're in, and we're trying to navigate around it.
And we won't know if that possibly will change till when?
Well, that, that number, the best that that number's gonna change is maybe forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, for circuit breaker reimbursement.
Forty thousand.
That's the only.
That's the only relief that you might see there.
Sure, people can leave, but the thing is, the same, that door swings both ways, it could actually get worse.
Somebody else could come into town, and if somebody else.
No, I'm just trying to find, you know, that, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I, I'm just, you know, what is the worst, ink back up from there, and I think that's what we've always done before. Looked at the worst, and that's how we've been able to have this position, the town has been in for all these years during this downturn. Anyways, we're good?
So, so Monday, we should have an update for you.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Make every effort to be there.
See you Thursday.
And if you can come, uh, Thursday at five, I think it would be greatly appreciated from the residents, at least for this, from this finance committee member, to see our selectmen at that meeting, so that it's more than just.
Five o'clock or six?
Both.
Yeah, both, actually.
Five and six in the morning, man?
Where if you cannot make one, make one of them.
Yeah.
Are they feeding us at this time?
No.
It might be cookies.
Yeah, they might be cookies, that's about it.
No.
Not my.
I'm diabetic, I can't eat cookies.
The, the only reason why I'm saying this is that, um, the more voices that the school committee.
They're sick of me.
So we have to talk, we have to talk too?
They're sick of me.
I, I, I would.
We actually have to.
No, just, you just put your hand on Gordon's shoulder and say, I stand with Gordon.
I stand behind him, so if you throw anything.
That might inspire.
I think it's just you.
No, no, I, I'm just saying that, that there's, the members who show up to this meeting seem to be getting discounted, and the message that we're sending to the committee, it's been sent repeatedly.
By who? By the members of the committee. We've had people come and talk with us and say, well, you know what, I have people on the school committee, for instance, on the capital projects, that they wanted to simply come right back and submit another budget for six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, despite the fact that you had two overwhelmingly no votes in Plinton and Halifax. There was, those people are not listening.
Yeah, he's, he's not, they, they wanted, they wanted to turn around and vote.
Do we do kneecaps?
They wanted to turn around and vote at six nineteen again.
See Carrigan, Carrigan, what's his name?
Please stop, please.
So, I, I'm just saying.
No, I, alright, I understand.
That your, your attendance should help make a difference, that's all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Gordon.
Thanks, go ahead. Okay.
That cost you extra.
Well.
Alright.
I'll put it into my tax.
Let's start from the beginning.
Thank you, guys.
Bye, Gordon.
Thanks, thanks for, you know, it's a thankless job, but thank you anyways. So, thanking you, so it's not as much of a thankles.
It's an hour and a half, I'll say.
Still, still pretty thankful.
Like, like the move.
Starting at three.
Like the, like the move that we approved, minutes from regular session December ninth, two thousand fourteen, and January twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Uh.
We're on a fast track now.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'd like to move to approve the payroll warrant number seventy for three hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-two cents. Venda warrant number seventy-three for two hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-two cents. School warrant number seventy-four, hmm, for two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and four dollars and eighty-two cents. And ambulance commitment two B for thirty thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-six cents.
Second.
Any further discussion other than police payroll warrant number seventy? I am, uh.
I'm standing in front of you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, uh, one second. Wasn't there one last?
That was the one.
That was the one?
That was the one, yeah, that was, that was from last week.
Oh, okay, beautiful. You are good. Alright, sorry.
I moved to approve the payment to the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number seventy-five for three hundred and fifty-two thousand, six, five hundred and sixteen dollars and nine cents. Venda warrant seventy-six for one million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and six cents. And withholding warrant number seventy-seven for one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and forty-one cents. And mobile park fee number three for five thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
Any further discussion other than warrant seventy-five, police payroll? I am standing in front of you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, selectmen's bills, um, for the audit, three thousand dollars unless Malloy, Marini. Law account, uh, Teresa's, attorney Lawrence Mayo, Michael Gilman Esquire, for a total of two thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-three cents. And this is for professional services for land use, general counsel, and labor counsel. Okay, youth and rec concession expenditures, twenty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents, and that's for national grade lights electricity. Town hall electricity, one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and six cents. And that is for the monthly electrical bill for town hall. That completes the presentation. For bills. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'd like to acknowledge the selectmen's payroll, weekending three, seven, fifteen, for six thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. And acknowledge the following turnover, uh, for two thousand fifteen dash sixty-one, one thousand, seven hundred, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. And I think that completes, uh, present, presentation.
Is this revised? Are these revised budgets? No, those are the original set. Oh, they are, okay. Do we got a new set? No. We didn't have. You got, you got, you got, yeah, the first set was a much larger set. Right. And then you got a second set, which is additional budgets that you hadn't gotten the first one.
I lost my folder at home. I thought I might have left it here. I didn't make my folder, my folder, my folder or anything, yeah? Though I gave you my homework. Alright, um, proceed.
Okay, um, just a reminder on the fiscal fourteen audit, we need everybody to complete the, uh, related party and fraud questionnaire.
I think I did my one.
Can I do my own, right?
I don't know, Mike, I know yours, that's when we get some.
I never do my homeworks.
Well, it's one of the last pieces that needs to get done just for us to get the audit.
There was, there was a bunch of things that I had to go over to Charlie with the last time to answer it.
Mike, your answer's in the, if you had a ring, is that, your.
I have to give me a call.
Something you added in that was there before? You gave me another copy?
I need another copy. If you need another copy, I can give you another copy.
Don't give him another copy.
Right here. And if you need another copy, another copy.
Is that the one I gotta fill out?
Yes.
Alright. Don't run off at the end of the meeting. Help me finish this and I'll get that. How's that?
Fine, sounds good, I know, we can make that deal. South Coastal County's Legal Services, the, um, organization submitted a petition article for thirty-five hundred. They're interested in meeting the selectmen into our finance committee to provide more information if the board wants to meet with them. Or I can just refer them to the finance committee, I don't know what.
Okay, these one of the two.
These one of the two typical organizations.
He's usually a sponsor every year, you know, too.
And the next one is the same.
We used to have three.
Well, the, the action was.
Community action.
That was the third, that was only for a couple of years and then they stopped submitting petitions.
With the two South Shore women's, South Shore.
So, legal services, are you interested in meeting with them?
No. I'm not, because we, it's the same article we talk about every year.
I can refer them to the finance committee.
I would think.
What did we do for, do last year, do you remember?
We approved it.
For thirty-five?
I believe so.
Were we able, uh, do we also do that to South Shore Women?
Yes.
Yeah. Are we able to do that this year?
I don't know if we will.
We don't know.
But we could call them if we can.
We'll find out.
But I mean, I certainly would like to add, add these to the list. They did meet with us. Sorry you missed it, Troy. You can always catch it on cable.
I did.
Okay.
It's up to the board to make that decision. They did not submit a petition article if the board wants to know.
Oh, they did, oh, I thought they did. Alright, you were just talking about this one.
Yeah, take them one at a time.
So, much, and do we have to allow them to put it on there?
Don't worry, you don't have a petition. Right, let me, let me get one thing per, I will send legal services to the finance committee, yes?
Yes, please.
Yes, yes.
South Shore Women's Resource Center sent in their petition late. They sent it in on March fourth, which was after the deadline. If the board wishes to, it could reopen the warrant, put the article in, and then close the warrant again.
Well, isn't that open anyways?
No, it'll close March first.
Automatically?
Yes, by bylaw.
Oh, we already voted that. Did we vote on that?
No, hold on, by town bylaw, the annual town meeting warrant closes on March first. The board has on occasion, in fact, most years, has voted various times to reopen the warrant. If it wishes to, it can do so tonight, if it wished to, put this article on the warrant. The other possibility is to put on a special town meeting warrant, but then it really is the board's article because it would require a hundred signatures to get on the special. Or it could tell South Shore Women's Center, sorry, you were too late, you either have to get the hundred signatures by the twenty-fourth, or you're out of luck.
I think we could open the warrant.
We could open it with no promised up funding.
Right.
All, all we're, all we're doing is, is we're allowing them a hearing on it, but I'm gonna put it down. I, I, I would second the motion that we open the warrant and place it on it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we're gonna put that.
Close it.
On it?
I make a motion to be closed.
Well, I think, can, can we put this one, I'd like to put this one also with the same contingency, if there's no money, there's, we don't have any money. South Shore Community Action Council?
Sure, second.
Troy, you okay with that?
Sure, second. Third?
Third, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion?
Make a motion to close the warrant.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, close.
Finance committee, Karen Faber's resigned her seat due to unforeseen family needs. The board could send her a note.
I'll make that motion that we send a letter to Karen Faber thanking her for her service for the town of Halifax.
Oh, hardly, second then.
I, uh, I think she was really, uh, a, a good asset for the finance committee. I mean, she was. That's the type of people you need on the finance committee, very passionate and very strong, you know, with their opinions and for the community.
And plus, she was very knowledgeable about what was going on.
Yeah.
I haven't missed that.
Yeah, me too, seriously. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, Deb Kezey has resigned a full-time while as a member of the, um, Halifax Lights. I think, I was wrong, I think we have three people, not two, but that's still not a quorum because we needed four at the very least.
Because it's what, seven?
Exactly, a seven-person committee. I, um, Troy Marvel asked me to do, get some PR out and put on the website. We've sent a note out to the local media. Um, I've sent something out, the news and notices. I know on their Facebook page, Halifax and, uh, Lights Facebook page, they've put a note up asking for member, you know, volunteers to serve on the committee. We're, basically, folks, if you want Halifax Lights to occur this year, we need more volunteers serving on the committee. Please call the selectmen's office at seven eight one two nine four one three one six if you're interested in serving on this committee.
Is actually on a Saturday this year or Friday?
No, we don't, we don't even have a date.
No, I mean, Fourth of July is.
I believe is a Saturday.
Is not in the middle of a week. It's actually on a weekend.
Right, but you're, there's a number of years they've not held it on the fourth. It's not sure that.
No, but it makes it more, I think.
I hope.
Better event being actually. Yeah, we've, over the last few, at least the last three years, we've held it on a Saturday before or.
Right.
We typically do except for our, our anniversary, just 'cause it costs us more to do it on the fourth.
Yeah, if, if there's enough volunteers on it, that they could make that difference.
I think we ought to send a letter to Ms., to Deb, asking if she would, in fact, still consider, I know she says that she'd volunteer, but thanking her for the service and, and hoping she will continue to volunteer in some, some capacity. She's resigning as a full-time member of, yeah?
She's helping, willing to help out, but can't serve the community, yeah?
Yeah, I'll go second then. Second.
What was the motion? Oh, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we appreciate your, your help. Um, Mark Agden, who lives on, uh, Firefly, Firefly Road, wrote a thank you note to the board CCing the Halifax Highway Fire Department for assisting him in a medical emergency back on February second. Um, obviously, they've only been CC, but the board could send a note to the fire chief and to the highway surveyor thanking them for the department's efforts.
So, uh. Second.
Yeah, so nice to see all the departments intertwining and helpful and it was nice that, that they brought that to our attention. I thank them. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Okay.
Done that. For those.
Oh, you have one?
Uh.
And we have to make a decision this week because we're going to press the end of this week. I think Troy marked what he was interested in.
Does.
Front and back.
I think, did I respond to?
This is kind of the same thing.
Yeah, that's, that's. Yeah, I responded by email.
I think so, I will wait for them in the rich sunset light.
I'll write it. One choice, one, no, it's done.
Did you write yours?
I sent in an email, but I already know which one it is.
Oh, I don't, you wanna write it on the ones you?
Yeah, I did this one.
I just looked at them. My, one of my computers got eaten by some vicious bug.
And then I liked this one. I don't know why I never liked that.
Working off, you know, shuffling back and forth and sticks and I think my sticker's gonna wear out.
Yeah, I like that one. I don't know why I like that one. It says welcome.
You know, what's funny is having that sign up and it had to be up in December, and yet there's no snow on the ground.
I like this one, but I didn't have, I didn't know it was in Halifax.
Is that a sunset or a sunrise? That's a sunset? Or is that a sunrise? That's a sunset. It could be either way.
Does it matter?
It could be either way.
Do you saw it?
Yeah.
Sunrise, sunset. Let me get the mic.
I told her you, you said.
Either, either way, I looked at it as a new day.
Yeah. Or a new night.
I like this, but I feel like we've already had that.
I think they, they have them.
Actually, yeah, there was one.
Yeah.
It's a beautiful.
The lovely, yeah, the church, yeah. I think Maria might have taken that, 'cause I think she had something similar on her Facebook. From the council on aging.
I kept grabbing from my pen, I keep finding this stupid thing.
I, I don't know, I like the car. I like this one. Which, but they, they, they look to be back, so I'm looking for the front, and that one kinda looks for the front.
You guys already signed it.
Yeah, that's why I wanted for the front. I don't know, I like this one.
And we have, we're gonna do one in the front and one in the back, one, you gotta help me, I'm in.
Well, they, no, they got a front.
Yeah, this one?
This is our.
I, I, I didn't even notice the signatures.
We, we got a front. Now, the problem is, right now, each of them have chosen a different back.
I could move to this one. I did like this one. The only reason I picked it, I couldn't tell I was in Halifax, but I liked the picture.
I'm not changing.
That's fine.
Just go with that.
You never do. You're firm, fair, firm, and.
Consistent.
Consistent.
I like the cars, you know, in the background, I really, they're not good pictures. Yeah, any more, it'd be really even tougher. So, I kinda, I kinda like this one. So, we gotta.
That's fine, I, I'll switch to this one.
I switched for fire chief for you, you're gonna do the back.
Right. That was a pretty good trade for me.
Okay, so the board officially is saying, this is the front.
And this is the back. Alright, moving right along.
Can you like send these down to, you know? I will contact the folks who sent them.
Uh, they're making unanimous, I'll go with that.
Troy, you wanna hang on a minute? Sure.
We definitely do front back, is that correct?
Yeah. Okay, uh.
When, when is the cutoff?
End of this week.
Okay. Troy's gonna do?
I'm Troy.
I mean, I did that again.
It has to be to the winter by Friday.
Yeah, I know, but I've asked Charlie.
But I, but they think that will probably go day, just get everything together.
I know.
Can you just lock me down? Don't give me any calls.
Do that. Because I, I want everybody, everybody needs to look at this. Everybody needs to look at this, so.
Let's move along, please. Beautification committee?
I'll, yeah.
Okay.
I'm still gonna try to get the, um, safety traffic.
Charlie, shut.
I've been working midnights for the past ever.
Traffic is safe. The beautification committee and such, there's some details from Mr. Cussinger along with a very, I guess.
Elaborate note.
Okay, will we get time on that? We, there's too much snow, so you're not gonna.
I mean, the minute I start seeing crocuses, I'll start worrying about.
I'll make a motion that we, um, abate the ambulance, um, fees on February, February two thousand fifteen for eleven thousand, nine thirty-eight nineteen.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I, I just had to make up some time.
The board previously.
Keep doing it, keep going, keep going.
The board previously, um, agreed this proposal. We got it signed off. This is with the fire department establishing lieutenant positions, not additional staff.
Right.
Two people would move up from full-time firefighters to full-time.
I was very comfortable with it.
So, we're not increasing staff, we're just moving two of the people. Um, the board, it's contingent upon town meeting approval, so simply because the board's signing it off tonight doesn't mean it's happening. It would only be A, effective of town meeting, B, go, that's Jeff's. I know, don't worry, just sign.
Why do we sign?
Pick, pick a line, any line.
So, we need to get them, have a motion to sign the.
Yes.
Second.
Any further discussion? This is on the, uh.
Establishing the position of lieutenant tenant with, inside the bargaining unit. Um, again, it does increase the number of staff members in the, as full-timers, which simply move two of them to lieutenant status.
Who signed that?
That was Jeff.
Kuzo.
He's gonna fix that. Really, I mean, come on, we're good. Come on, Jeff.
Can I date it?
Yes, go ahead, please. Uh, Blackledge, yes, they all said yes. Blackledge Farm Chapter Forty-B technical assistance grant application was approved. Now, the award letter needs to be signed by the chair with the approval of the board.
So, move.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
And for our, uh, non-studio audience, we do have a Chapter Forty-B hearing for the Blackledge Farm, Bird Project Fifty-two, single-family houses off of Franklin Street. That is this coming Monday, March sixteenth, upstairs in the Great Hall at seven o'clock. It's a public hearing. You're invited to be there, you're invited to participate.
So, that's at seven?
Yeah.
And it's what property?
This is the Blackledge Farm property off of Franklin Street.
When exactly is that? I think that it was six, on the sixteenth?
On the sixteenth, I think they have earlier hearings to do with other matters, and then at six forty-five, they're dealing with a waiver, um, of some financial stuff.
And then the, this meeting starts at ten?
Yeah, I, we'll go back to the board and check.
I don't need to sign this.
Uh, motor vehicle incidents involving the fire department, other people are hitting our vehicles. One was an ambulance on the nineteenth. The second was a fire chief's car on March fifth. There's no action for the board to take, but everything's been.
I know, what, maybe some, are we out of order from the notes that I was?
Fire department action reports.
Emergency management, snow.
We're not there yet.
Alright.
It's the next thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, action reports are here, um, on the.
The chief's car was hit.
Somebody swerved into his lane.
Was hit. March fifth and.
No injuries?
No.
No, but the pictures you can see, he was highlighting the tire tracks, somebody swerved into.
For the emergency, for the emergency management, we're filing for all four storms now. We'll see if we, how much we get, obviously it would be great if we could get seventy-five percent reimbursement, but it's not expected, we're not expected to get it until the next fiscal year, so whatever money we've sunk into all this, sure, we'll eventually see.
Will melt away, right? Will they go with FEMA after or this is?
Yeah, this is going to FEMA.
H, I thought H.
Hema's going to FEMA.
Yeah.
Hema's going to FEMA.
FEMA's going to Mima, which is going to FEMA.
Right.
Well, isn't Hal, isn't H?
H is Hal.
Hema is going to Mima, who's applying to FEMA.
To request.
To.
Mima. Mima, which is.
Massachusetts.
Massachusetts, neighborhood, okay.
They'll go to FEMA.
I've given you some information about the proposed purchase of a recycling truck.
Did you?
Yes, it's in the, should be in the folders.
Okay.
Yeah, and so if you have questions about it, they're coming in on the twenty-fourth.
What time was this Wednesday? It's next.
Their capital plan is. Capital plan next Wednesday, she's coming in to see capital plan next Wednesday.
And then us.
It's not this Wednesday.
No, it's next Wednesday.
For capital plan, but then she's coming to see you all on the twenty-fourth.
Right.
Okay. She's bringing, is she bringing big pictures of the truck? I got one right here, look at that, huh? Not colored though.
He, he won, okay.
But that's the truck, right?
Yes.
Well, that's one of the.
Possibilities, yeah, because maybe there's two different trucks there.
Right. Trash the truck.
OPEB trust, I'm just, I know I'm going, I don't know if anybody from the treasurer's office is saw us going, we had three people go to a different workshop on OPEB trusts. This is the money we're setting aside for OPEB and now we have to start thinking about investing it, which is, I'll get to that in a couple of minutes because that's been a hole over from a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, I like that holding pattern.
Chapter thirty-two B, municipal health insurance reform, I'm gonna ask the board to decide that two weeks from now, they'll vote to accept sections twenty-one through twenty-three. I have, there's a big, large packet of information including the language of the sections and the state regulations concerning this. What this does is it doesn't mean, acceptance doesn't mean you're making any changes. It's the first step in making changes if at some point in the future the board wishes to do that.
So are we doing our accepting the rules and regs surrounding it so in case we do change our mind in the future?
And I am gonna suggest however, if we can do it for this coming year, that we, a number of years ago, we signed whole harmless agreements because Mayflower Municipal Health Group had changed the copays slightly on our plans. We, so it was basically, we're gonna have those plans in place, but people who have a lot of copays and deductibles, if their, the increase in their copays and deductibles was more than offset, or less than offset than by decreases in the premiums, we'd give them some money back. We've been doing that for a number of years, but I don't, we've been now running the current plans for a number of years also, I think it's time to get those contracts done and eliminated. It's not a major change, you're probably saving the town somewhere between five and ten thousand dollars a year. I'm not suggesting at this point trying, for instance, to do a major change of moving everybody to a less expensive plan. People's plans would stay exactly the same as they are now.
So your recommendation is that we accept twenty-one through twenty-three section.
Two weeks from now and then I can talk with you all about possibly making that minor change.
Okay, so you don't want us to move it tonight?
No, because I can't.
Trying to read.
Okay, yeah.
Was that part of what you were saying, adjustments because of the budget?
A few weeks ago, I mentioned the possibility that if we wanted to do a very, very large change, this would be the first step in doing it, but I mean, not gotten anybody interested in doing that change of moving everyone to the less expensive plants.
Oh, I don't think you would be getting anybody interested. But you were saying, you brought it up. So is, is this something that needs to be done in order to do that?
Any, any change in the plans, we would need to do this. So what this does, at least sets it up so we've gone through the first few steps of getting that done. So if some point, whether the minor change I'm suggesting or sometime in the future, a larger change, we've already gone through the first few steps of the process. Um, recycling abatement.
Number two, five-five-nine.
For fiscal year twenty fifteen, the person's a customer of ABC disposal, the ABC verified that the customer had participated in the recycling fee, the person is asking for an abatement of the annual fee of thirty-eight dollars for fiscal fifteen, just a five-dollar late fee.
So moved.
Second. And Pam, you've, you've, it's following along, same?
Yep, we want to get, we got that letter from ABC.
Yeah, ABC disposal.
Reports, discussion, is that one of them?
Um, yeah, it's in the very back of that, in the middle.
It's in this blue section?
I can see it all the way in the back, all the way.
Oh, it's in the back. Oh, there it is. And they know it's supposed to be paid and then. I mean, everybody just knows that, right?
We tell them that whether they.
They didn't fill the community, they kept something in the mail, is that what we got, the mail?
Yeah.
Wrong, my, yeah.
Well, I think they, I think it went to the collector's office first. I think the collector's office got it. Yes, right.
I don't know, I just.
Yeah.
The late fee, you know, it's supposed to be paid and then disputed.
Oh, nobody leaves a date of things like that more than me.
All right, any further discussion?
Are you sort of moving?
Yeah, they already moved them second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Green communities.
Was that a I, Troy?
That was an air.
Air.
I make a motion that we authorize the chair to sign all the green community grant paperwork.
Second. Lots of paperwork ready to sign, chairs?
Yeah.
What is the green?
This is the.
Well, that's the one you went into Boston and.
Right, that's the big check.
You're right, okay.
Just this, a couple of days ago, we got the approval, we had, we did that.
Yeah, submit what your plan was and then they.
So we got certified as a green community. The next step was to submit the grant application for money that we were eligible for. That application went in in the middle of January. Just a couple of days ago, I got notification that we're approved for the grant application, so in order to move forward, we need to get all the grant agreement stuff signed off. These are for two projects over at the elementary school, one to change the thermostats and the second to change the lighting. And I believe, Michael, all the signatures are for you except for the one that says, make sure you want it, we can sign off as a notary.
Does, uh, so all this so far is the lighting and thermostat?
At the school.
At the school, there's no other.
There are no other projects that will be using this money.
Ever?
No, this is, this particular money bundle that we've got, future years, we will be able to apply for what are called competitive grants. And if we get that money, we'll be able to do further projects.
So how big was that check?
Hundred and fifty-four thousand seven dollars. That's what the.
That's what it's gonna cost to change over all those lights.
Thermostats and the lights.
Yeah, but we're gonna save a lot of money in the long run on utilities.
That's a lot of money for lights and switches.
Well, because you can, you can imagine only up to the day costing like five bucks for a.
There's a lot of lights over there.
Well, yeah, there are a lot of lights, it's a big building.
And what do they anticipate for?
About thirty thousand total.
Something like that per year in savings.
Yep. Thank you, Charlie, for getting that done, I know it was not easy on top of everything else you did.
It's what he gets the big bucks for, right, Charlie? Happy to do it. He got a few doughs in there too. All right, Charlie X, don't, don't get him upset, we'll disappear.
Okay.
Water tank emergency?
Hop for hops, we talked about water tank emergency communications. The fire chief had sent a letter to the water commissioners asking that in their budget for the, and in the bid specs, that for the water tower, they include five, five thousand dollars for installing what's called outrigger and melting the three public safety, basically it's our outrigger from the tower. The communication companies don't have room on what they're gonna be doing as an alternate tower in essence while this work's being done to put the emergency communication services on. So the fire chief is asking that a structure be placed on the water tower while it's being painted to put the emergency communications antennas on that. Given that the town has had all the money for the cell towers.
The water department.
For the water department, I think it's fair that five thousand dollars is spent.
And it shouldn't even be that amount.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they've all done some brackets.
Yeah, it's not gonna be that much, but we're putting that in just because in case.
What I'm recommending is the board send a letter to the water commissioner supporting the fire chief's letter.
I'll make a motion that we do that.
Second. And this is for his.
And police fire.
Which is already up there?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Make sure Kim checks those signatures, don't want to yell at me tomorrow.
Pam or Kim?
Pam. No, I'm doing it with you guys. No, I'm doing it with you guys.
Um, we talked about Blackledge Farm, Halifax Golden, Golden Silver Coin Shop, Mr. Schiriamonte's been sent in relation about the cost of obtaining a copy of the draft minutes from January twenty-seventh, I've not heard back from them. He did call on the twenty-sixth as a result of this complaint concerning the owner of the health club, I had sent a letter, a copy of the letter was sent to that person indicating that he should cease his system, any such activities, and Halifax had not had any other complaints, nor did he indicate any further problems there, he was complaining about the regional flyer that had included that information, so that's where all that comes.
Halifax. So these are in the, why are they both under the same, because he's the one mentioning this?
The two things are under that because, yeah, it's all connected to him.
Because he, because he's mentioning the.
I talked, I talked to the owner of the health club about it, happened to run it tomorrow, and he said that the man was very rude on the day that he came down and said something to her.
Mr. Schiriamonte. I'm not excusing rudeness or anything else, I'm not, but I'm also not.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
You're not charging.
I'm mediating between these parties, I'm just.
Right to farm.
You got enough between the three of us.
Is there, Pam, is there any reason why we can't? Where are these minutes?
Oh, actually, yeah, those are the ones you guys just approved, the twenty-eighth, yeah, we, yeah, I had a draft because you guys haven't re-approved them yet, but now, tonight you guys just approved them, so.
And what I will do now is send another letter saying now that the final version, the approval version is done, and he will get another letter saying here's how much it will cost, and he's free to come by, pay the money and pick up a copy.
And one of my missing folders had a flyer that came out, you know those flyers that come out? The coupons is like fifty of them? One of them was the.
Which was the starting point of the, his complaint.
Well, this was, just came out, I just opened it and there's, there's a flyer, I wanted to bring it in.
Well, bring it, then bring it back in again.
I gotta find that and the rest of it. But, yeah, it just seemed, yeah, okay.
Right to farm, agricultural committee, do you want to have a date for a public hearing, public forum? I don't recommend the twenty-fourth, I think we're starting to get overbooked.
I think we should do a different day, maybe.
You may want to do it a different night.
Because I'll tell you, I went to a border health hearing the other night and the great hall was packed, so I think we should do a completely different day because I think you're gonna get a lot of participation.
Is this the same thing?
Uh, no, it's a little different, this organization would like to be, would like us to become a right to farm, um, community.
Exactly, what is that? I mean, people have a right to farm, put garden in their backyard, it's not to.
Because we're already.
I know there's some fees or something involved.
Well, no, it, it makes you create a, a commission and there's a lot of positive, but then I've heard a lot of negative, so let's do a.
Yeah, there are three things happening. I believe the instigators for this are concerned of the potential border health regulations concerning farms and burn inspections. As a result, what they did was come in petition to town and the yard goes along the warrant for two things, one is set up an agricultural commission and then second to pass a right to farm by law. Basically, in short, the right to farm by law says to everybody, hey, in Halifax, hey, you're in an agricultural community, live with it, sorry. I'm not joking, that's really what it comes down to.
And, and if the wind blows off my yard because the cows are in the way, you get a problem.
You know, actually, you don't have a problem because you shouldn't complain about.
You get a problem, you're gonna live with it.
Yes.
All right, so would you want to pick a date, Charlie? Do you want to do it on like a Wednesday night, like the twenty-fifth? Like the next day?
It's up to, what the board's up to do. Michael's saying, I can't even come on Tuesday nights.
No, 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 it's okay. It's okay, it's just a farm, I'm right to farm.
Yeah, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to do is set us, set a, so that there can be some discussion about these things before town meeting, because if we get to town meeting and that's when the discussion happens, I think there are gonna be problems for that discussion. Not before, I guess, it's simply that if we get lots of people asking lots of questions for which there are no answers, it sort of favors a discussion at town meeting, I'd like to get that.
Well, you know what we should do, Charlie, because I also think because this tax bill is gonna be going up, I almost think we need to do a forum, a public forum to invite, because the Facebook will start getting busy soon. And, you know, I don't really comment on there, but I would love to sit upstairs on a Wednesday and invite anybody who wants to come in to ask questions about the budget.
Wasn't there two farms we were looking at though? A Pro and Con on the.
That was on the, but that hasn't officially come before us yet, but, um, the park question, the common court.
The park, no, I was thinking of the, uh, the, uh, the vote that doesn't matter?
Yeah, that, that's about common court.
Oh, I thought you meant the park.
No, 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 park is the.
Abbreviation or acronym.
Um, we got a three week, after this next meeting, we got three weeks till the meeting after. Can we put it in there?
No, we don't, I don't think so.
No, we don't. I mean, we could.
We're the tenth, the twenty-fourth, then we have three weeks to April, uh, fourteenth, which is why I.
After the next meeting, isn't there a three week?
Yes, March twenty-fourth to April fourteenth.
That's why I'm thinking that would maybe be a better.
Yeah.
I would ask you not to do it on this, not do these forums on the seventh, because in fact, the deadline for submitting the warrant to the press, the eighth, I'm gonna be slightly busy. If you wanted to do this on the thirty-first or on the.
Any, you know, between the three week period.
Well, then I would, what?
You know, I'm.
Well, if you're thinking, I don't know if you're thinking of Tuesday or another date.
Where's my calendar? No, I was, well, if it's different, then what does, difference does it make whether it's different?
I don't know if it makes a difference.
I don't mind doing it, like, we could do it, we could do it Tuesday, March thirty-first.
Twenty-fourth and then one.
Unless you want to wait until April after the one.
Actually, it's better the other way.
Because our next meeting would be the seventh, so somewhere between.
We could do the thirty-first.
No, we're meeting this fourth, we're meeting the.
Meet the twenty-fourth, then we got the thirty-first and then the seventh.
As possible.
Fourteen, twenty-eight, and then it's the three. I don't see the three week.
So it's that.
Twenty-fourth to fourteen.
Charlie asked not it to be the seventh, so let's do the thirty-first.
Fourteenth, you're right, I'm sorry, it is, it is, okay. I don't know, I thought the seventh, we.
Right to farm.
Is March thirty-first.
And what my plan would be to do is, it's a public forum, I think we lightly moderate it, but I think the main purpose is to allow proponents to come in, to explain those two articles, to, for other people to ask questions and such. Go from there.
Yep, I think.
It's not necessarily resolve anything.
So that'll just be that? That, no warrants, no bills?
I don't plan on it.
Kim will, Kim will monitor the fistfights and I'll monitor the wrestling matches and then it should come up.
And you're gonna handle the.
Michael can handle, handle those that are boy's juice.
So she's handling the box and he's handling the wrestling.
I'll send out one of my kids for their martial art, but they're doing sticks, so they can bring their sticks. That's the new thing. I don't know.
Thirty-first at seven for this? Sorry? Okay. Um, boom, boom, boom.
Give it three weeks.
Do this in two, we'll talk about code of conduct in two weeks. Visitors, Silver Lake Regional School District, obviously we talked about that already, town report, we've talked about that, still waiting, two years from the highways, better health place, Facebook presence, I'll wait for OPEB trust. This was a carryover from two weeks ago. We need to get those documents approved. I know they've been with the board for a number of weeks now, both that and the investment policy. I didn't know if the board had questions or wanted to move ahead and approve them.
Who came up with those?
These were drafts that were then given to Attorney Mayo, he did some, made some changes to them, you got both the lined copies with all the cross-outs and underlines showing the deletions and additions, and then you got a clean copy.
I'm comfortable in moving them, but.
I want to know where I read it, but I don't have any, I'll just wait.
I don't think I read it. But if you guys are comfortable with it, I mean, you can throw it on.
I make a motion that we approve the OPEB trusted.
The trust agreement and the investment policy.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Hi.
I'm just, there's a lot of note changes here, I'm waiting to hear people, just so you know, on Lindy's, Lindy's did finish paying.
Oh, good.
On the trash bags, so we're good there. Swimming grant, I'm completing the paperwork for that, working with Kathy Bryant, since we got that award a few weeks ago. Cemetery space, John Peck had called me to indicate that if the town was interested, he might want, be able to make a, get a, a landowner make an offer to the town for space down on River Street, just obviously it would be sold to the town at some price, but if the town is.
I don't think there was a tremendous need, like, Bob.
No, I figure we're about fifteen or twenty years away, right?
Yeah.
Here, are we that far away?
At the rate we're selling plots, yes, we had about a hundred plots left and we're selling about five per year.
I think some of the problem is the double stacks, there's no singles, and that's why some, I think that's what slowed it. This would, I think this would open up to more single slots. I mean, I, I wouldn't refuse to look at it. If.
No harm in looking, I'd ask them that.
I mean, I myself, you know, I mean, I'm gone, I'm gone, but, you know, the kids and, all right, who's on top, who's that, who's on second, and, you know, who's on third?
Well, it's obviously...
It's not the tradition that I'm used to.
Obviously a need, even though it's gonna be a timeout, but I think I might agree with Mike that when they start double stacking, you know, and you didn't have a say as who was gonna be stacked or not.
Well, I think you do.
I'm sure, yeah, they can move you, but, I don't know, it's just, to me, it's kinda creepy anyways to talk about. I mean, it wouldn't hurt, you know, to look at it, but, you know, just to shut it down altogether, I don't know. I don't know.
I see no...
I think that it proves us that anything that positive that comes up, we ought to take a look at it and let the town decide on it, that is their decision anyway.
And I mean, maybe it doesn't have to decide this year, maybe it'll still be there next year.
I don't think we're gonna, I don't think we're gonna have to get this for town meeting.
Whatever, all right.
Is it okay with the board to get contact, John?
Sure.
Yeah.
BMI. At some point, I'm gonna need to either...
Talking about my weight.
Isn't that a bikes bike? You know, how the BMIs, when they race the bikes?
BMX.
Oh, that's BMX.
No, I'm like one cheese curl away from obese, okay?
Just remember those gymnasts were all sort of the same.
You've heard that, right? These who ask questions.
Sorry, this is my handle.
Place it out of form. What's BMI, do you remember that?
That's the music folks.
Oh.
Right, I know.
Did the board select, the, the, see, now I'm calling the finance committee, the board is selecting.
The finance committee hasn't had any reaction yet.
Okay, so I just...
You know me, I just wanna pay, because I hate not paying something I'm supposed to pay.
I, I, I agree, but, you know, I just, it just rubs...
No, I know, that's okay.
It rubs me, that's all. It just rubs me, I agree, but it...
Yeah, that's cool.
One of those ones that, Troy, what about BMX, what do you think?
With all the stuff that's being put on...
Oh, I had the question.
Facebook and everything else, without people going through, why do we have to pay?
You know what they're doing? And, you know, I noticed this, because now one of my computers are, and it has nothing to do with this, but they get these kids to go on these sites for free music, and then it destroys their computers, because they shouldn't get paid for it.
Right.
That's what a lot of these crashes are.
That was like fifteen years ago.
Well, also...
No, this is happening now.
No, it's also sort of more the mousetrap, not by being a liar or anybody necessarily.
No, I'm not saying them, I'm just saying...
I understand, but kids, you know...
Free music, they go in, they look at it.
And then they get a virus on their computer, because that's what they're actually selling, are viruses, yes.
Yep. And it's very painful. Yeah, we can put it over there.
I saw this on the meeting space thing, the next thing.
Well, can we stay with BMI for a minute?
I know, I don't have the, I don't...
I do, I mean, I gotta make a, you know, I'm fine with not putting it on, I'm not, in the sense, I just need a decision.
I think it should, should be put on.
Let the people decide.
Yes.
All right, I'll go with that.
And we've, you know, we've been lucky to hold this off this long. Oh, yeah, this is the one we mentioned about budget. The transfer there, that seventy-five ready to pay this year, unless it would, for your next year, more than this year. You wrote a note on this about a week ago. One of the things I did read.
Okay.
That, that, you were gonna ask maybe finance for, what's that fund, emergency or whatever, transfer line number?
Reserve fund.
Reserve fund, yes, yes, yes.
But that, no, that was for Montons and Pond Work.
Oh, that wasn't?
No.
This one, oh, because that's, one of them I answered you, and I thought that was...
That's the one you, you said to me, I've got questions about this.
Yes, and then I didn't agree with transferring, so that I must have overlapped the two of them. So, it wasn't about...
I'm not asking for a reserve fund transfer.
On this?
No.
Okay, all right. And I just, you know, where's the limit? Or is it a ten year, is it five years?
No, it's forever.
Oh, it's one time?
It's, well, no, we're gonna pay every year if we do this.
Yes, but it's, it's, it never goes up.
It will never go up.
And what was the amount?
Right now, it's something like three hundred and seventy-five dollars, something on that order.
And that's the best?
What are we using that we have to pay them for?
The cultural and aging events they have with the music musicians singing songs.
Also, anything that we use in recorded music. For instance, we have the DJ at Halifax and likes. We have the dance classes upstairs using recorded music. Anything, you know, anytime that happens.
The dances at the school, elementary school?
So, so, as the radio stations and the TVs...
Yes, actually.
Paying this money out to BMI, every time they use somebody's music, they're paying it for it.
Yes.
So, if I tape it off the radio, they've already paid for it, but, yeah.
I know. Well, it's like the NFL. You can't reuse the NFL recording for anything else other than the NFL.
But, no, it's getting shorter and ridiculous, especially when you have all these people hacking into computers and stealing stuff and doing stuff all over the world, and they're gonna pick on the honest ones, saying, you gotta pay me for it, because I know I know where to find you.
And who are broke to begin with.
Oh, but, if the board votes it up, fine, like, I'll take it.
You know, I, I, really, I think it should be up to the, the taxpayer if they're...
Yeah, because, I mean, we're, we're looking at shortfalls and everything, maybe even cutting people's salary, losing people's stuff, and we're about three hundred dollars.
Well, we're also, we also gotta make sure that we're not hanging the town out the dry. You know what I'm saying?
I understand the legal ramifications, I just think it's, it's, it's short sighted ridiculous.
And, and are they covering ninety percent of the artists? Are we gonna get hit?
ASCAP will be coming down, I'm sure, once they hear BMI, money from us, ASCAP will be next.
And how many of, how they doing that?
There's, they, between the two of them, they take most of the artists. There are a few small organizations that take a much smaller number of artists.
So, then we'll just make sure, can you actually restrict other artists? Then, look at, we got this agreement, we're only gonna do these artists, and then the popular song comes out with them, one of the other artists, and they wanna use it, you can't use it.
Correct. You would have to tell anybody coming in who would be playing music, whether live or recorded, that they are limited to works under these copyright organizations.
So, I should only sing Sam Cooke music, and I shouldn't get involved in it?
He probably is one of those.
It's a slippery slope. You're opening the door.
I just have a moral problem with it, but if it's something that may, in fact, because we make a decision that not to do it costs the town more money because of a lawsuit in the future, I don't know.
Does town meeting have more weight than, than ignoring it?
Well...
Or if, if the issue comes up, look at, town meeting voted it down.
Well, which will not matter if we, if for some reason BMI took us to court, I don't know that they would, because it's a small change, but just for the heck of it, hypothetically, the fact that town meeting said no is not gonna be relevant to a judge.
So, there's no weight, but we're obligated to bring it to town meeting.
You're not obligated to do anything.
Well, we're representing them, and we're conflicted on which way to go.
Let's say today BMI decided to sue the town, I suspect that you would be the person sued. Not personally, but it's...
I don't know, I just kinda, that hesitation really pulled me under the bus.
I mean, basically, we represent the town, we're gonna ones that names will show up on, on the lawsuit, even though the town would have to put the money out if it's a crap.
So, if that has no weight, then...
Let's ask machines.
Why go through?
Because that's the only way you get the money. Either, you know...
Or then, we have to, if we have money, we can do it a lot easier.
If, I will vote to put it on the ballot or whatever, warrant for the town to vote it, and then go from there. I don't feel comfortable with it, but...
Right.
That's just my personal opinion.
But are we gonna make them aware that we still might have to do this, whether you vote or not, or die? Is it like a non-binding vote?
No, it'd be appropriation at town meeting.
Okay, so if the town appropriates, that ties our hands to...
Correct. We would then contact BMI, and I, if they probably would ask me, well, did the town appropriate money? I said, no, town meeting refused to do so. Then the ball's back in their court again, they can decide to...
So, it isn't us to get in?
Well, I mean, we're partially responsible nevertheless, in the sense of, we'll know that illegally, we will have people coming in with recorded music or use it, or live music, and they don't have the proper, we don't have the proper rights to allow them to do so.
But we didn't know what town they were gonna put you in.
No, I think that's the way, just put it to town and...
I mean, you know, it's sort of like saying, if someone stands up and sings the national anthem, and somebody put a little piece on, you gotta pay them, because you're saying...
Well, actually, that's outside copyright.
But it's, it's, people are gonna think, this is gonna be a hot button issue, and hopefully I don't wanna make it wrong.
I would move that we place it on the warrant article with the town, you know, that we can voice our opinions at town meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
And last one, the meeting spaces, I can contact Mr. White. Basically, our problem always is in terms of having overcapacity. Some meetings is that even, is that we don't have a lot of spaces for meetings, and the jump from the great hall, let's say eighty people, to the multipurpose room at two fifty is a very large jump. We probably, the meeting he's particularly incensed about was last year when we had the council age, and I agree, it was fully fact. You know, if we had known that number of people were showing up, maybe we would have done it over the multipurpose room.
It would still fit, we were still within...
Well, we had a lot of people standing in the back, he's, I was overstuffed. This was not a...
Environment that was not conducive to a good meeting, is what you're saying.
No, this was a special forum, per se, presentation about the proposed council age.
Yeah, and we had a couple, but that one was very busy and others were not.
And he was very...
Oh, not the town.
He was very upset that we had a meeting place that wasn't conducive to having that number of people, especially the number of elderly there. And the challenge always is, can we find the right meeting space for the right number of people?
It's hard to predict too.
Right, well, that's...
Yeah, so it's...
Could you have expected a year ago that we'd have so many people upstairs to talk about barns?
No.
That's what that was?
Yeah.
Especially when they start talking, they're gonna charge, look at them, you wanna charge them for a barn, and ten dollars for every chicken.
No, 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 that was a, that was a...
For every animal.
Talked to somebody that said they talked to you.
Yes.
Towing?
About the animals.
No, I'm talking about, yeah, it wasn't about the animals. He's the guy that runs the meetings down the fire station. I don't know why, I remember numbers, I can't do names tonight.
Towing?
Towing, you know how we use the tow companies?
Oh, yeah, the question was, some of the individuals...
He runs Triad.
Yeah, yeah, Kim.
Kim, yeah, 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 yeah.
Some of, some of the individuals who put on the list to tow, they feel they're not being called on a regular basis when they're on the list for that particular day. And it's not someone who's listening, because I gotta get some more information on it.
Okay. I take one of those tours, why were, you guys are out of town, tow companies? Versus...
What I said to them was, was this, that they, they pick, not so much out of town and whatever else, they pick on each individual as a day or a week that they are...
No, yeah, it's a week schedule, yeah, yeah.
On the schedule, so that's how it works.
No, I know, I, I remember he, he mentioned that, and I told him you were, you were out, so I told him I would remind you of that.
And, you know, also, what's in the discussion was, who replaced the mailboxes or signs that are destroyed when plowing?
And we send that note out, every November first, it says, anything within the ten bounds isn't us.
Isn't us or...
No, no, we're not responsible for it.
So, I, you know, and some of that I don't agree with. During a storm, you can't see, you're out there, the weather's terrible. But if three days later, you're doing cleanup...
No, there's nothing preventing...
You, you, there, there's some responsibility for, if, if it's buried, you can't see it, that's one thing. If it's something in plain sight and you, and you damage it, that's different.
There's nothing preventing someone from filing a claim.
I get the hiccups, I can't stop.
Okey dokey.
But I'm just, it's different than during a storm than after a storm. Mailboxes during a storm is kinda hard, but after it...
I mean, I, I have seen, I've seen more mailboxes and signs stuck along the road that are either off with a little kilter, or the mailbox completely gone, people get baskets and stuff, they hang it out and replace it, so it's, you know, it's a little, as being a citizen, the taxpayer is a little aggravating, but I also realize that, you're right, you can't, sometimes you can't tell what's underneath that.
Yeah, but I, I think, you know, when they're doing it during the, when it's sunny out, it's, there's no storm, there's, there's really not a lot of excuse to not be aware of things running. Like the sign up the center of town.
But at the same time, you, the way, and here's how an individual explained it to me. Now, you require me to put a mailbox out in front of my house with my address on it well enough out so the post office can deliver my mail, you require me to put a, a, a dress on my house. Yet somebody comes down and destroy that, how am I responsible for somebody else destroying what I put out there when you require me to put that stuff out there?
Well, that's the federal, if you want your mail there, right? Isn't that the federal, that wants you? I mean, we, we want the number on the house, so we, they want the number, so we can find them.
Yeah.
So, you know... But, yeah, I mean, if you, you know, I, I'm done. Pam, you all set? Any, any happy child, you're...
I need to go, I need to go into executive session to talk about patrol officer contract.
Well, that means I get to go.
You get to go.
You're gonna fill out a form.
So, while we're waiting for the backup, I can do the form and...
You'll move over there and...
Before we close up, I wanted to say one thing.
Oh, I'm not waiting. You guys could be over there for hours.
Well, I wanted to thank you guys for running the meeting the way that I watched it on TV the other day, and, you know...
That's, that's more punishment.
Oh, God. But for, and Cam and yourself, the meetings that you guys attend, I don't think people realize how much work you guys do to make things work.
And you.
I don't do any.
He does all the out of town stuff.
No, I don't think so.
Swimming upstream.
Yeah, what do they, what do they call that to keep you on an even keel? That shoe? It keeps you steady and moving forward.
But, no, I, I mean...
Keeps the rest of us from straying off course.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not very much, because I, I, I sat there and I was, I couldn't talk, and my chest was killing me, I was like, oh, because I wanted to get up and come up, and I couldn't.
Yeah, I'm glad you're feeling better.
No, me too.
Still the voice.
I learned all these Navy terms from my old man, I'm forgetting them again. Anyways, I'm done.
Oh, I make a motion, we go into executive session in order to talk about the police contract, patrol, patrol officer contract, not to go back into public session.
Yes, yes.
Any further discussion, all those?
We're not coming back.
We're going into it because...
You will not be coming back in the...
And we're going into that session because it would be harmful to the town's organ interest to handle this.
The safety of the community.
What was that?
I have to say those words.
Does the new...
I just read out of my book about, I see this blind, I don't know who she...
Yeah, get those words on our stuff here, we know what those words are.
I know, I don't know.
I will tell.
How was the deal, I was making that?
So, this, a lot of the stuff was never here when I actually did my first year, you know how lucky you were?
I asked for it.
I know.
You just must've asked.
I didn't know you could ask that and get that. It was before your time.
Aye.
All right, thank you all, have a pleasant week.
Are you, are you going to this boys' town?
Oh, I was gonna ask you.